Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Please rise and have to pledge allegiance, started by our chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first order of business, if anybody didn't know, is to, we're here to make a presentation to Sergeant Tom Murphy and Officer Mark Noda for their quick and decisive action to save a guy's life who got his hand cut off in a machine. And their prompt work saved it for the firefighters to mop up afterwards. I'd like to tell them that. But I'm only kidding with it because my wife works for them. But no, everybody did a great job and we're proud of you. Chief?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming here this night, and especially the Board of Selectmen for allowing us to do this presentation tonight. I know we're kind of taking over your meeting room for the next five to seven minutes or so, but it much appreciated, and I really do that. So we're here tonight to give a life-saving award to Sergeant Thomas McDonald and Officer Mark Noda. Now, this is not something that we take lightly at all. It's not something that those of us that live in town see very often, but these were exceptional circumstances leading up to this ceremony here tonight. And if I can just turn the clock back a little bit, the preparation and training and education that saved a life on March 22nd actually started about two and a half years ago. About two and a half years ago, the deputy chief came into my office and said he had a proposal for firearms training this year. And during firearms training, he proposed that we would teach all of the officers the use of, proper use of a tourniquet, a quick clot bandage, and chest seals. So basically, an emergency trauma kit that every officer would have in their cruiser. And when he first came in, of course, like any administrator, I was like, oh, what is this going to cost me? How are we going to do this? Well, because we've worked together for so long, he already had the answers. And we decided at that point, we were going to move forward with the tourniquets, the quick clot, and the chest seals. And I thank God at this time that we did. And again, I thank the deputy for bringing that forward. And I like to think that our department is on the cutting edge of training and things like that, and it did, in fact, make a huge difference. So as most of you know in this room, but I'm going to just say it for the people at home that don't know, in the early morning hours of March 22nd of this year, Mr. John Kelly, who was with us tonight, and I just ask you to stand up and let everybody see you here tonight. Mr. Kelly was severely injured in an injury at the National Coding Corp. up on Beach Street in Rockland. As a result of that injury, he lost part of a limb. And you can imagine, losing part of a limb, he was in very bad shape because he was losing blood very quickly. He was very lucky that a friend of his and a coworker was standing alongside him. Mr. Bailey, who was a lifetime Rockland resident, was able to get some rags, attempt to stop the bleeding, and tie off the arm as best that he could at that time. I am extremely fortunate that Officer Mark Noda and Sergeant Thomas McDonald were the two officers on the scene, reading the log and checking the tapes and stuff, within about two minutes and 45 seconds. They pulled up to the scene. Somebody was at the side door yelling, screaming for them to come in, come in, come in. They went in and immediately assessed the situation. Now, I can only imagine what that situation looked like and what they went through emotionally when they first saw, and when they first encountered Mr. Kelly, who was not in the greatest shape at that time because he had lost a lot of blood. Sergeant McDonald, who I will tell you all is a Marine, former Marine, acted very quickly, instructed Officer Noda to return to the cruiser and grab the trauma bag. Officer Noda came running back in. Sergeant McDonald then applied the tourniquet appropriately, stopped the bleeding immediately, and then assessed the situation and cared for Mr. Kelly. And Officer Noda cared for some of the other people that were there in a very calm, professional manner until the EMS arrived, the paramedics arrived from the Rockland Fire Department, who then did an amazing job in basically packaging up Mr. Kelly, for lack of a better way to say it, getting some fluids into him, and then transporting him to the hospital and then into Boston, which ultimately saved his life. So we're here tonight to honor Sergeant McDonald and Officer Mark Noda for those life-saving efforts. And I do want to make note that in speaking with Mr. Kelly and Mr. Bailey tonight, before we came upstairs, that the owner of National Coding flew in from Michigan to be here tonight for this ceremony, and the other senior administrators of National Coding are all here this evening. And as Mr. Kelly said, it's a family atmosphere down there, but for National Coding and the family, his family, all supporting him. He's not sure that he would have made it through all of this, but he wanted me to thank all of you tonight as well. So thank you for that. So not only did Sergeant McDonald and Officer Noda save Mr. Kelly's life, and again, that's undeniable at this point, they then, you can imagine the emotions, how high the emotions were running, they then, once the paramedics took over, had to conduct an investigation. And I think by finding, as horrible this is going to sound, Mr. Kelly's hand and some other pieces, they were able to use that to help in his rehabilitation and help him as he goes down this long, tough road that he's on right now. So they, again, continue to be professional and do their job, you know, as best they can. So I thank them again for that. So tonight, I'm going to ask the deputy chief to hear me first Sergeant McDonald's award. And this is the first time we've given out something like this. It's a beautiful, lucid award, and it has on it to Sergeant Thomas McDonald, in honor of your prompt and uncompromising ability to act under pressure while rendering first aid that resulted in saving a life on March 22nd, 2019. And under that, we have the Rockland Police Department badge. Go ahead.
Again, same thing for Mr. Mark Noda. Officer Mark Noda, who's been with us how many years now, Mark?
Five.
Five years. And Mark Noda's been working the midnight shift along with Sergeant McDonald, so they've created a pretty good teamwork that they do together. So we're lucky, extremely lucky at Rockland Police to have these two men working for us. Again, Patrol Officer Mark Noda, in honor of your prompt and uncompromising ability to act under pressure while rendering first aid in saving a life that resulted in saving a life on March 22nd, 2019. Congratulations, Mark. And because this is so exceptional, I know I'm going over my time limit, but for the first time in the Rockland Police Department history, we're also going to start awarding ribbons. And in this case, for law enforcement, the white and red ribbon is significant because it indicates that the person wearing that has, in fact, saved someone's life. So for the first time ever, we're going to award these also to these two men. And they are now able to wear that on their duty uniform and their dress uniform. So Lieutenant. I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Ryan.
Just briefly, Rockland's very fortunate to have such a fine police division and a fine fire division. And these men always are up there, ready to put their lives on the line for us and keep us safe. And I don't know why I called you Murphy. I've read your name. I've known you for 40 years. Don't even, we relate you to Murphy. Just a senior moment, anyway. I'm the oldest guy in the room, except for Frank Noda. He's older than I am. But anyway, seriously, both of yous, great job. Tommy, from the town of Rockland to you, our community extends a gracious thank you for all the work that you do and your dedication toward your job and the passion that you extend to it and helping that guy, this fellow right here. Yeah, it was stupid. John Kelly. I said, no, John Kelly's a good friend of mine. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. You guys are great. You know, when it came down to Mark, between one guy and another guy, five years ago, who's going to get the job? And I told the deputy, he came down to the house and asked me about him, and I said, if you hire this guy, you're getting an ace. He's a man who knows his job, he's a guy who served the town well, and he's not going to give you a ration. He's going to just do the job and do it well. And Mark, thank you for making me proud. I appreciate it. Thank you. Lieutenant, nice job with you guys. You guys, thanks to all of you. And I hope you guys see the job.
All right, see if I can squeeze in here. All right, well, thank you, everybody. That concludes our little presentation this evening. Again, from the bottom of my heart, Mr. Kelly was so happy you're here with us tonight, and we wish you nothing but the best going forward. Speedy recovery.
Thank you.
Tommy, great job. I'm a classica. I know. What do you think? With all your stupidity. Nice job, Mark.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Lieutenant, nice job, kid.
I can't believe I called him Murphy. A weird thing. I didn't even, I didn't even hear myself call him. I don't even know where Murphy came from.
No idea. I'm pointing. I'm pointing.
I didn't even know I said it.
Turn your mics for a second. Turn your mics for a second. I have a minute. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, yeah, wait, no, just a quick one, you know?
Turn the mic over.
Thank you, sir. I wish you all the best.
That was great.
Oh, are you kidding me? That's... Chief, do you want to close it? Chief, do you want to close it? Okay. We're back live here, and we have the police chief to give us a quick synopsis of what happened the other day up at the center of town here.
Okay, on Tuesday, the 14th, at approximately 3:20 in the afternoon, we had a reported armed robbery. There was a little bit of confusion when it first started. The armed robbery actually happened on Church Street, but unfortunately, the victim was robbed of his backpack, his money, and his cellphone. So when he wanted to call 911, he didn't have a cellphone to call, so he turned around onto East Water Street, stopped somebody who was walking, got a handle. They then let him use his cellphone. He called 911. So we traced the call to East Water Street. It was an armed robbery with a gun shown. So there was some confusion initially. However, 10 days before, we also had an armed robbery on Church Street by a black male who showed a silver handgun. So we were aware, our detectives had some observation going on in the area. So the minute that this happened, we had about six people working, I believe. We called in school security, the school resource officer. We pinned that area down right away and locked down that block around Church, Franklin, and Blanchard Street. Fortunately, one of my officers saw the black male fitting the victim's description walk into the front stairs of 57 Church Street. So we knew we had the right guy, the right house, but we also knew that there was a gun involved. So we locked the area down as quickly as we could. We were able to evacuate first and second floors of the three-family apartment on Church Street. We did put out a reverse 911 call, and I will take a little bit of heat for this. There was some social media chatter, shocking, that people didn't get the reverse 911 call. We did it to a two-block radius of the suspect's house. We wanted everybody just to shelter in place, stay home, close the doors, blah, blah, blah. There were people that didn't get that call. And as you may know, many of us nowadays, myself included, I don't have a landline at my house anymore. So if I don't register my cellphone with either the rave alert with the fire department, which the chief talked to me about tonight, or Plymouth County Code Red, when that alert goes out, you're not going to get the page. So I'm going to do an update, work with the fire chief on this to fix this so we don't have a problem like this in the future. So we locked the area down, called in Metro SWAT. As everybody knows who lives in town, there were a lot of police officers coming from a lot of different directions. Within an hour, we had probably 50-plus police officers here, armored equipment, drones up in the air, all kinds of great equipment because we belong to the metropolitan and law enforcement community. We were lucky enough to get everybody out of the house. Unfortunately, the two suspects were still on the third floor with two boys, six and eight years old, and a three-month-old baby. So we knew we couldn't go in using force. We knew it was going to be a long night if they didn't come out. We got all the armored equipment in place, the drone up. We knew where they were. We called them out, and fortunately enough, they came out. We were able to then, with now the cooperation of the first victims, charge them with the armed robbery on May 4th and then again on the 14th. So that person is currently being held at the Plymouth County House of Correction. He's been charged with, I believe, three counts of armed robbery, numerous other charges, also including the endangerment of a child, because you may have seen it on the news. He walked out with one arm up, cradle and a baby, I think, assuming that the police weren't going to take him into custody or do something. But fortunately, we have well-trained officers in that group. They were able to take the baby and handle him appropriately. So the good news is, very happy ending. Nobody got hurt. Bad guy is in jail. They had a dangerousness hearing, which is basically a hearing before the court where the district attorney's office and the police department want him held until such time as trial. His attorney obviously is trying to get him out. But now that we're able to charge him with the first robbery on May 4th, I don't see him getting out and getting back to Rockland anytime soon. So good news story, and peacefully, nobody was hurt.
Great job again. Thank you. Thank you again for the time.
All right, seeing it past 7:15, we have a public hearing on an all-alcohol license transfer to Luca South Corporation doing businesses, Luca South Shore, 933 Hingham Street, formerly Bella's Restaurant. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
You have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to open the hearing. All in favor? And I'm going to roll call vote it. Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Rockland?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, yes?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Thank you. Come on up, guys.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Aida, McDermott Quilton Miller, 28th State Street in Boston. With me is Sean Williams. Mr. Williams is Officer Director and Shareholder of Luca South Corp. Also in attendance is his brother, Matt Williams. Collectively, they make up two-thirds of the ownership of Luca South Corp. As you stated, this is the transfer of the all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license, which is currently operated as Bella's. By way of background, Mr. Williams, Sean Williams, that is, who's also the proposed manager of record, he has close to 30 years' experience in the restaurant industry. His brother, Matt, has over 30 years' experience in the restaurant industry. They are current owners of two restaurants in Boston, one Back Bay and one in the North End, both Luca Restaurants, Luca North End, Luca Back Bay. They are experienced operators. They are award-winning restaurateurs, and they hope to bring a bit of the North End to the South Shore. So they're really excited. They're also purchasing the real estate as well, so this is a big investment all around, and they're really looking forward to the opportunity to become part of this community. They are both residents of the South Shore as well, so I think convenience-wise for them, it's a great opportunity for them to be a little bit closer to home. But the idea is to bring their signature dishes that they have at both those restaurants and bring them and present them here. And I think they, and they know it's going to be a success, and I know, I hope the community embraces them. And in terms of what they're looking to do, there's going to be a short period of time once they get in there and take over ownership. They do want to refurbish a little bit here and there, clean it up, rip up carpeting, repaint, freshen it up, things like that, to really bring it up to, you know, modern amenities and really nice, clean atmosphere. And if you've ever had a chance to go to their other restaurants, you see it's really a first-class operation, so.
Any questions of the board?
So I've got a few.
Go ahead, Mr. Penny.
Either one of you actually going to be on-site as the on-site general manager?
Yes, I'll be there. At first, probably seven days a week, but probably five, five days a week.
All right, so the license will be under you, and you'll actually be there?
Yes, I'll be there.
Okay. Plan to have all you bartenders and everyone serve sake?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Rockland?
Nope.
Ms. Diamond?
When do you plan on opening?
As soon as possible. We're doing mainly cosmetics with paint, you know, ripping up carpet, re-carpeting, nothing major, so we're really trying to not be closed for very long.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't have anything. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'm looking forward to it. I frequent in your restaurant in the North End, so it'll be nice to be local.
This might be out of turn, but we do a restaurant week every year as well, so you'll be hearing from me sometime February of next year.
Actually, you're hearing from me right now.
I'm giving you the heads up now, so when I call, don't hang up on me.
We'd like to be involved in the community.
All right, that's my hope. So that's the hope.
He'll put in the calendar.
Yeah, make sure, make note of that.
You seem to have all your paperwork in order, and we're going to be happy to have you here.
Right, thank you.
It would be a pleasure to the board.
Make a motion. Close the meeting first? Close the public hearing?
Close the meeting? Close the hearing?
Yep.
And a second? All in favor? All right, that's a vote. We'll take the vote. Very good. What's the president of board?
Do you want to?
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the alcohol license transfer to Luca South Corp.
Okay. All in favor? That's a vote. Let's see now. All right, we've got license applications again for Luca South Shore, 933 Hingham Street, a common bidler's license and an entertainment license, and all this, everything's in place.
Make a motion to approve both the common vic and the entertainment license.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. That's a vote.
I'm not paying attention.
Welcome to the town.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Looking forward to it. Can highly wait for it to be back open. Parking clerk appointment, one open position, annual appointment, interviews with two applicants, Robin Day, 384 Union Street, who works in the collector's office, and Diane Marlinow, 63 Plain Street, who works in the treasurer's office. They're both here, I'm sure?
I'm Robin. I'm here.
Come on up, Robin.
Here's Diane.
Here's Diane. Diane. Tell everyone who you are.
Hi. My name is Robin Day. I live in Rockland. I'm a taxpayer in Rockland, and I'm currently employed in the collector's office. And I appreciate the opportunity to let me speak tonight. I'm currently applying for the position of parking clerk.
And you know all about the job, right?
I do. My thoughts on that are that several, several times during the course of the year, I've sent people downstairs to the human resources department where they're currently paid, and many times they come back to our office, and I then direct them to the treasurer's office, that's the backup to make the payment. And sometimes they even come back again for change. So I feel that when people come in the front door, we're right there with the first point of contact, it would be more convenient if we took the payment. They're used to making their excise tax payments there, utilities, other tax payments. We also collect other citations for the town, for the fire department, police department, building department. We could incorporate those payments into our reporting structure, and it would be more convenient for our residents.
It just, I think it just makes a lot of sense, to be honest with you. I really do.
Thank you. That's what I was thinking, because I've seen it several times, and I would like it to be more convenient. That's my reason for applying.
Okay, thanks. Now, Diane, come on up and...
Thank you very much.
No, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Diane Marlinow. I'm a resident of Rockland as well, and I am currently the assistant treasurer. I know that what Robin has said was that they do go back and forth and back and forth, but we are currently the backup for Stacy for the parking clerk. And I don't feel like the collector's office couldn't do a good job, but they do have lines sometimes, and sometimes it's very time-consuming to find out what the people are looking for when they don't have the ticket with them or what they have to pay. You have to call Plymouth County. The system that it's on currently, and this is a Plymouth County parking system, is a DOS system. It's very slow, so if you have to look up something, it is time-consuming, and I don't know that, there are times when there's lines from the collector's office down to our office, if that would be a good thing for somebody to be standing behind somebody who doesn't have their parking ticket, who doesn't know when they got it, isn't sure what their registration number is, and all of that. So that's my reasoning for why I think it should be in our office, because currently we are the backup, and I would think it would make sense as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two positions. One is in the collector's office, one is in the treasurer's office. For the record, I just want to let them know that there's a $1,200 a year stipend that goes along with it, so, you know, that's one of the things that we have to consider also. Questions or discussion? Mr. Mullin?
I have a few thoughts. And I came in here completely open-ended on this, but to me, even though we heard from our two very quality individuals tonight who were interested in this appointment, like in my opinion, it's not really about the people, as it is the function of the office that our, this role should be in. And I think frankly, one of the reasons we're having this conversation is because, I mean, like Rich is probably going to agree with me in a hot second, is because our charter is so, oh, gosh, John, integrated that, oh, this doesn't even make any sense why we're having this conversation, because it's 2019. So to that end, I really view this conversation as really, oh, what office it should be in, oh, more than who should hold the position. And to that end, again, to keep everything streamlined, I think all, all type of collection, like in payment processes in the town, should go through the collector's office. And when we do have, like, an active charter review committee, like, I would hope that this would be one of the many, many, many issues that it looks like, just to streamline this function, to also see if there's an opportunity to get away from the Plymouth County system as well. Or maybe there's a way to have our own system, and everything is streamlined into what, like, everything that you've been working on, Judy, to have everything uniform. So my decision frankly isn't about other people who applied, it's really the office that this function exists in. And to that end, just for the fact that Ms. Day is an employee of the collector's office, frankly, nothing else, like, I would be in favor of appointing her with the understanding that as we move forward, we look to incorporate this whole role, like, into everything in the technology that's happening in the collector's office as well. So that's my thought.
Ms. Diamond?
I'd have to agree with my colleague, Mr. Mullin, on this issue. I think everything should be out of the collector's office as well. I just, this is crazy to me that I can be located in there.
Yeah, he's dying to agree.
I know you want to.
All right, so yes, I will agree with Mike Mullin.
There we go.
All right, note this down.
That's a first.
And again, it has nothing to do with... to me, even though we heard from our, our two very quality individuals tonight who were interested in this appointment, like, in my opinion, it's not really about the people as it is the function of the office that our, this role should be in. And I think frankly, one of the reasons we're having this conversation is because, I mean, like, and Rich is probably gonna agree with me in a hot second, is because our charter is so, oh, gosh, John, integrated that, oh, this doesn't even make any sense why we're having this conversation, because it's 2019. So to that, and I really view this conversation as really, oh, what office it should be in, oh, more than who should hold the position. And, oh, to that end, again, to keep everything streamlined, I think all, all type of, oh, collection, like, in payment processes in the town should go through the collector's office. And, and when we do have, like, an active charter review committee, like, I would hope that this would be one of the many, many, many issues that it looks like, just to streamline this function, to also see if there's an opportunity to get away from the Plymouth County system as well. Or maybe there's a way to have our own system, and, and everything is streamlined into what, like, everything, you've been working on, Judy, to, to have everything uniform. So, oh, my decision frankly isn't about other people who applied, it's really the office that this function exists in. And, and to that end, just for the fact that Ms. Day is an employee of the collector's office, like, and frankly, nothing else, like, I, like, I would, I'll be in favor of appointing her with the understanding that as we move forward, if we look to incorporate this whole role, like, into everything in the technology that's happening in the collector's office as well. So that's my thought.
Ms. Nyman?
I'd have to agree with my colleague, Mr. Mullen, on this issue. I think everything should be out of the collector's office as well. I just, this is crazy to me that I can be located in there.
Yeah, he's dying to agree.
I know you want him.
All right, so yes, I will agree with Mike Mullen.
There we go.
All right, note this down. And again, it, it has nothing to do with, with the individuals applying, I just look at the functions of the office. Also, the collector's office is actually set up to receive the monies, you know? They, they do have the glass window, there's protections in there, they are designed to, to collect the revenues of the town. And it's just, you know, as I continue to look through this, as a town, there are times we just don't use common sense. This is just one of those common sense things. It just, it's just the right thing to do.
And, yeah, I'll amazingly agree with Mike Mullen as well, just for the fact that, you know, I, I think it's important that we not confuse the residents. Residents come to town hall to pay their bills, they go to the collector's office. So, you know, why should this be any different? So I think just for the function of the office itself, I think it should be in the collector's office.
I hate to tell Diane that I agree with him, but...
I know, I know. Diane is as qualified as it gets. It's not, not anything with the individuals, you know?
Well, it's not a personal thing, it's, you know, the collective is the collective, and that's what they do, they collect. So you, you record, they collect, you know?
If I may just interject and kind of echo what you guys are saying, I think where we're attempting to move and what was initially started to, to take it from the tax collector role into the town collector role, that opens up all of the conversation and discourse of, well, what is the tax collector actually taking? It should, we should be functioning as a tax collector and taking in the things that we are currently taking in, including civil citations. We do have direct contact with the RMV because of excise tax, so we are able to unflag a person if they're at the registry with a parking ticket, so. And I also would like to mention that of the new candidates, they are equally, equally more than capable of doing either one of them. The contention, I think, is that it should be in a confined area where there's cash transactions that are going on all the time. And if you're going to have a town collector, then have a town collector.
I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to name Robin Day, on the, as the administrative assistant tax collector for the parking clerk.
I'll second.
I got a motion in a second by Mr. Mullen, he beat it by a, by a hair.
You can have it.
Pretty much all the discussion, all in favor? Nobody opposed? Thank you. Thank you both for showing up here.
Stopping up.
You're gonna, you're gonna handle this one, because I'll get a conflict. He's gonna talk.
Oh, okay.
Number six on the, is a rent control board thing, and because my sister is the president of Leje woods, a homeowners association, I'm gonna sit out and not participate, so. Mr. O'Laughlin can handle the proceedings?
Okay, so for the rent control board, Chairman Judy Hodigan will make her recommendation to us. For the representative for Lejewood tenants, we have Robert Giruse, 10 Crab Apple Circle, and Estelle Started, 2 Dogwood Circle. Judy, come on up for a second. Are they both, both present?
I don't see Estelle.
All right, Robert, why don't you come up for a second?
So, can I just interject real quick? One of the things I was wondering, because I was a former rent control board liaison, is like, I know our rent control, our meetings where they set the rate the past, over a few years, has been contentious, not on any part of the town, but I just think a lot of, frankly, the dynamics within Leje woods has made it contentious. And, like, Miss Started has been our appointee, I think since the origination of the rent control board, am I right, Judy? And, and I just have, I guess, a question. Oh, because this issue, or who fills this seat from Leje woods, has been such a hot-button issue over the past few years. One of my other first votes that I made as a selectman was on this very issue, that I just want to make sure that the folks from Leje woods know that this, our issue has come up again. And to that point, like, I was just wondering if we might be able to, you know, have the word and have the information out there. Oh, you know, but, so we might be able to, I'll see, like, a more, I mean, oh, oh, perhaps like a pool of candidates where there's, I'll actually exist, where there may exist more interest than what we have right now. So that would be my only thought, to table it for two weeks, you know, just to really help get the word out that this position is open again, and to make sure that there are folks who know, oh, you know, that they, if, if they have an interest in this position, I can apply for it. So that's my thought, like, and I didn't want this gentleman to, oh, oh, you know, I, oh, like, I wanted him to be on the same footing as everyone else before we begin, so. I'll just throw that out there, for consideration at the outset.
Anybody, any thoughts on that?
I'm indifferent.
You're indifferent? Okay.
I could say something.
Let me check with the board first, and then I'll go to you. Rich, any thoughts?
Well, put it this way, it's out there, and I, I only, I grew up in Rockland, moved out, and came back after 40 years in Hanover, and I've been back a year. And I can see, I've heard all kinds of contentious stuff going on in there, and believe me, I'm not contentious, all right? I go with the flow, but if I'm right, I will go as much as it takes to be right, until somebody proves me wrong. I worked for the gas company, and I ran the big safety and engineering department, all right? I worked there for 40 years. And I was on negotiating committees, and I was on safety committees for 20 of those years. So I'm looking out for the best things in Leje woods, that's the reason why I moved back to Leje woods. And I could say a few other things if you want, and tell me about myself.
Yeah, dude.
Well, 20 years ago, I don't know who was in here, but if you heard about what happened in Hanover with the mailboxes, do you know what I'm talking about by any chance? I just, I just curious. On, on Hanover Street, which is 139, all right? I lived there, and my next-door neighbor was a senior citizen. And there were 120 mailboxes on the street, all but eight, you had to cross, you had to cross the street for those eight. Well, the postmaster was an idiot, all right? So I sent my wife down, my ex-wife now, down there to tell him. I checked with the letter carriers, and I did my homework about 120 and eight, right? And he made, he, she left crying from his office. I says, "All right, I'll handle it, don't worry." And with the help of Bob Nyman, I had Bob Nyman, Delahat's chief of staff, Kennedy's chief of staff, and Kerry's chief of staff on my back deck with Jorge Quiogo from Channel 5, and I've got the DVD at home that made the postal... So after the meeting we had on my back deck, Jorge goes down to the post office, and they go, "Oh, it's being changed to what he wants." And he never told, the order of progression for the post office in command is, say, Rockland to Brockton to South Boston to Rhode Island to Washington. Well, I went to Washington, and I got it done the right way.
Okay, okay. Ms., did you?
I don't know if I can speak.
Yeah, come on up.
My name's Maureen Tavellin. I live in Leje woods, I live at 7% Elaine. And we didn't, we didn't know this was coming up, as this gentleman said. And we found out yesterday, and my husband was told that he could come up and put an application in. When he got here, he said, "No, it was too late." But checking the application that he filled out, there is no date on when this is supposed to be submitted. So I do agree with this gentleman, a lot of people did know, did not know that it was coming up.
All right, thank you.
Just if I may follow that statement, Mr. Mullen, perhaps the woman's husband I, I met at the counter yesterday, it was someone that had an interest in, in making application for the position. And when I checked the meeting agenda, I saw two names posted on it.
Yeah, it has to be on the agenda, sure.
And I said, under the old meeting law, you know, the gentleman's name cannot lawfully come up, you know, for discussion. That's a constraint that, that state law has here. So whether the board, you know, chooses to take any action on this or not tonight is, is certainly the prerogative of the board, but the gentleman who got, who got turned away, not dissuaded from making an application, but, you know, he was told, even if I want, you know, I didn't use these words, but even if I wanted to, we couldn't put you on the agenda because it's, it's past posting time. So that's how that happened.
So I'm, I, I think I'm in agreement with, with Mike Mullen, seeing as though there's no real, real pushback either way. I, I think it might be prudent to just digest this for the next couple of weeks and allow, I guess, for more people. Judy, do you have something?
I do. In the interest of time, we do have a very significant rent controls board meeting on the agenda for June 3rd. Time is ticking away. It would be very significant if this, if this one appointment were not made, because it would mean that you guys, you guys are gonna have to make that decision by, on, within the next two weeks in order for that person to be on board for the June 3rd meeting, which encompasses the renting, the proposed rent increases for Hillcrest and Live Oaks. Entabling the discussion, I am all for it. I'm, I want to just, I would love to go on record saying that I wish we had this kind of competition when I started on the rent control board 10 years ago. You couldn't buy a person to come and sit on this board. And, and for everyone's own edification, the rent control board is consisted of seven people, seven individuals, two park owners, two residents of each park, and three Rockland residents. Now, the way that the rent control board is comprised is, it's revolving, much like yourselves. It is not something that there is a definitive stake in the ground where you have to apply at a certain time. Anybody, everybody expires at different times. It's all in the town report, as whose position expires. Mine happens to be the anniversary of my election, so in 2009, when I was elected, it's three years consecutively from that. I just want to impress on the board, I am supportive of any discussion that you have or want to make, or any decision that you want to. If you want to entertain other candidates, I'm more than happy to do that. I just want to let you know that we do have a deadline that's, that's looming on the horizon that needs to be addressed, and it's, it would have to get someone up to speed to understand what we're even doing on June 3rd, so.
The current term?
Is this current term expired, or this particular position, is there next?
It's coming up.
Before or after June 3rd?
So that is a question for the clerk.
So, yeah, that's a very good question, I'm not sure, I'm not sure when that position expires.
So it's in two, I know it's in 2019, but what is the actual fiscal date that's, I do not know.
It would, it would be on...
July 1?
It should be on her application, but I think it, my guess is that it's, it's July 1.
So if that's the case, and whatever decision that we make to fill this position wouldn't have any effect on that, that June meeting? So this, the current candidate, current person?
So the board is, the board is the board for the June 3rd meeting.
So, so I don't see, I don't see an issue.
And then, and then to add, we don't, we then, we don't meet again until January.
So we got time then?
Till you've got an incredible amount of time to make that decision of what you want to do with the board. It, it just so happens that we meet three times for, for the increases, and each park, Live Oaks and Hillcrest fall at the same time. Leje woods falls in January for their increases. So it is absolutely with the pleasure of the board. I am not as, I am chairman by sort of default. So I am perfectly comfortable with whatever, if you want to interview and, and have input from other people that you feel have the, the right, if they want to volunteer, I'm a firm believer in don't turn anyone away.
So what I, what I would propose, at this point, because it won't start till, till July 1st, and we know there is at least one other individual that would like to apply for this, I would propose that we, we don't act on this tonight. We allow, you know, we set a date, you know, I don't know if it's, let's see, so we'd be June 19th is probably the meeting that we want to make this decision by?
Is it 18th or 19th?
18th.
18th? All right, I was trying to do it in my head. I went to, no, no, no mind. So I would propose that we, that we open up, we'll, we'll take applications for the next two weeks, if there are others that want to apply, and they can come to the June 5th, 4th?
4th.
4th? June 4th meeting?
It's June 3rd.
I'm helping out, all right? If, if that makes, makes sense. You know, one of the things that I don't want to do is discourage volunteers. I think we've been working very hard to try to get engagement by our citizens. And I don't want to, you know, if we had a, you know, if we had to do something tonight, that's a whole different thing, but if we've got a little bit of time, at least, that's what I would propose.
Is that a motion?
The only quick technical question I have, in order to consider that for the 4th, we have an open meeting law deadline that we typically post, so would we have to have the names before we post?
The Thursday before.
So that would be the 30th. So that any interested party at home are interested?
So they have until May 30th to put an application in, and then?
12 o'clock on the 30th, that would give you time to post, right?
Yep. So is that a motion?
Sure, I'll make that a motion.
So that's a motion, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before we, I call for a vote, I just want to, Mr. Giruse, I just want to let you know that this is not any indictment upon you. You seem very qualified, but hearing that there's other people that might also want to apply, and, and apparently we didn't do a great job of getting the information out to the public, we'll give them a couple more weeks to apply, and hope to have you back in a couple weeks to, to present again to the board. All right? So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
I really appreciate you applying, I really do. And showing up tonight.
Okay, number seven, you're back.
Number seven, we're back in place here. Appointments. First on the list is Americans with Disabilities Commission Administrator and six members, three-year term, and Anton Maturna of 416 Market Street has applied.
Just read them all and appoint all together?
No.
Or do you want to go each one?
I want to go each one.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second to approve Anton Maturna, all in favor? That's a vote. Animal Control Officer, Ian Davidson of 490 Market Street.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second to approve, all in favor? That's a vote. Inspector of Animals, Ian Davidson, 490 Market Street.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor? That's a vote. Capital Planning Committee, three-year term, Richard Harris, 16 Morning Sky Drive.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor? That's a vote. Charter Maintenance Committee, says seven-year term, but do we don't spread these ones out, they're all seven years?
So it won't, so it won't be? So, it won't be, so it will end up being, from the time we appoint it, it'll be a little less than a year and a half of actual work. And this charter maintenance will only be for the in-depth review, and as soon as the new charter is done, it'll go back to the three-member board that exists today. So, this is just to look at the charter from 1970 and to do an in-depth analysis, review, and recommended changes and upgrades.
Okay, so, we're going to have seven people. Kathleen Corners of 1008 Union Street, Patricia Foley, 23 Belmont Street, Chuck Heshen, 110 Huggins Road, Beverly Jones, 41 Sawmill Lane, Brian Kane, 2 Ash Street, William Lenahan, 36 Hartford Street, and Donna Shortall, 1079 Union Street.
I would like to make that motion for these appointments.
Oh, can we just clarify the spelling of Chuck Heshen's last name? There's actually like an H in there. Oh, so it's H-E-S-H-I-O-N, sorry. Just stick with the spelling.
You might want to look at Brian Kane.
Yeah.
Brian Kane.
It's actually his name.
It's actually his citizen.
Do I have a motion and a second to appoint?
Yep.
All right.
Pending spell check.
There you go. All in favor?
Do I abstain?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why not?
Yep.
All right. Community Preservation Act Commission, the one-year term, and we have John Hennessy of 5 White Road.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second for John Hennessy. All in favor? That's a vote. Conservation Commission, three-year term, we have Lorraine Pratt of 771 Hingham Street.
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for Lorraine Pratt. All in favor? That's a vote. Constable, three-year term, Kevin Dalton, 764 Plain Street, Rockland, and Kevin McKenna, 1034 East Washington Street, Hanson. May I ask either one of those here? No? Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? That's a vote. Land Use Council, Galvin and Galvin, 10 Enterprise Street, Suite 3, Duck Spray, Massachusetts.
Make a motion to approve.
Hold on, before we do this, so, on this appointment, when we get into, you know, whether it's land council, tax title, labor council, have we entered into, well, first off, have we done anything from a review perspective on their performance? And number two, have we got into any discussion on, from a contract, what the costs are, what, you know, something we probably want to look at before, you know, at least these ones are, these are positions that were...
Financial.
Their financial impacts. So, you know, I'm just throwing this out. It's my first time through, but...
Yeah, do you have to put these out for bid?
I don't, no, it doesn't have to go off a bid, but I think before we appointed, I think we want to have some conversations with them, look what the costs are, do they have any intentions of raising their rates, lowering their rates, you know, just my own opinion.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I agree completely. One of the things, I mean, like, and we're not there yet, but when, after July 8th, I want to, I mean, within the first year that Doug's here, I'll really look at all of this. I can, there's like a few other entities with whom we contract as well, that frankly, I think we should look at as well. I mean, who are existing right now, I think, will do a good job for us, but I think we should really, to your point, which have a holistic look at everyone who we do business with, or to make sure that they were made a fit.
Well, you know, we're just starting to actually, you know, set goals, you know, setting reviews in place and putting dates to those reviews.
Agreed.
For our employees, we should do the same thing for any of those companies that we contract with. Same thing.
So, these contracts run out June 30th or 2nd, right?
Yep.
So, we don't really have a lot of time in which we had thought maybe to do this sooner, I guess, if we're going to...
No, but I...
No, I agree.
So, again, part of this is, you know, so, I think we've got a little bit of time, month and a half, and again, I'm not making the comment that, hey, these are, you know, these have not, these companies have not performed for us, that's not what I'm saying, but I think this could be the first step into, you know, what Mr. Mullin said, you know, when our full-time town administrator comes on, that we actually set us up for the long-term and set processes in place, you know, so there's a true review process for next year at this time. You know, maybe we start it in April if it's coming up in July.
Oh, but can I make a quick recommendation, because I hear you, Rich?
You can, but I doubt it will be.
I know, but I hear exactly what you're saying, but frankly, our dealing with like a land use council, dealing with our town council, I mean, dealing with Attorney Brown, are really, are the principals in the room who are really working with these people on a day-to-day basis, who can really, oh, really know what the hour is, picture looks like and everything else. There are, there are town administrator, I mean, there are assistant town administrator. Oh, and frankly, until we have our, that structure, like, in place for like a long-term period, I think if we were to try to do anything now, oh, in the next month and a half, we'd be operating, oh, but kind of with one...
Blindly.
Behind our back. So, like, if we could approve these now with the expectation that these things are going to be one of the first things we look at, oh, once we have a full complement of our permanent...
Staff.
Staff in place, I might...
I agree. My only thought process right now is before, before we approve this, because this is a potential financial impact, we ought to know what our fees are going to be starting July 1st. Are they going to be the same as they were? So, I don't think it's anything that's going to drag it on beyond the next meeting. I think we just reach out to them and say, what, you know, what is the fee structures for next year? At least that kind of starts the process, that we start looking at things, and then we put it, you know, a full plan in place. That's just, just on anything that's, that is potentially, you know, financially impactful, instead of making that tonight, we should, in my opinion, we should wait till the next meeting and just get from them their financial package starting July 1st.
I agree with Rich on this. Mike, I completely agree with you. I don't want to go in, I mean, these are three, you know, major positions, especially in this town, and I don't want to go in not, not in a good place for the new administration coming in. But I think it's also important that they all understand, anybody that's employed by the town of Rockland, that they're not lifetime appointments, and that they are subject to a review process, just as anybody else is. And, you know, I think Galvin, Clifford, and Brown have done, you know, very good jobs for the town of Rockland, and I wouldn't be against, you know, reappointing them, obviously, but I think to Rich's point, you know, from a financial perspective, let's just see what the offer is, and at least we can come from, make a vote from an intelligent position.
Because they'd hit the vote tonight, and then all of a sudden find out, okay, they're going up twenty bucks an hour or something.
The phone calls aren't free anymore. We're in trouble. We're in huge trouble.
I know. I'm just agreeing. No, I agree completely. So, is that all the information we can get?
Okay.
So, Jim, that's your project.
The answer is yes.
Yeah, that's your project.
The answer is yes, if I may. Doug Lap is coming in tomorrow to spend some time with myself and Jen, and I believe the chairman is probably going to appear about sometime after 10:00 or so on that. These appointments are not lifetime, but they shouldn't be subject to rapid turnover either. There are plenty of towns that, you know, from time to time, just like you do with your insurance packages and things like that, you want a little bit of stability, you want people who know the issues and the culture and all of that. I cannot speak for the incoming person, but as the interim, I think that if the proposed terms that I'll bring back to you on June 4th are reasonable for the time being, I'd want, I'd want that for Doug and Jen to have those, to have those people in place.
Absolutely.
In your work program, you know, in the first year, by all means, if this is an issue, and there's plenty of materials out there, there are templates out there for doing RFPs for law firms and...
Well, what you're saying is an issue, it's just starting is...
No, but I'm not either, but is, I've got a responsibility, not just to my appointing authority, but most especially now to the incoming administration. And I'm not speaking for him, but in my experience, I'd want these parties in place for him and Jen to operate with over the, at least for sure, for the next year.
Oh, with the history and knowledge, absolutely.
Yeah, so, but, all of that said, Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to put this off, I could ask that a terms sheet be submitted by all three of them in advance of your, in advance of your next meeting.
I have a motion for the three of them to be done next meeting.
I'll second, yeah. I'll make that motion.
At the table, the land use council, the tax title, and the town and labor council.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote.
Thank you.
It's probably a good thing we do to review everybody from now on. We're going to be starting new, and we want to make sure that that's what we do.
Agreed.
You know, we don't make any boo-boos for the new people to come in and have to straighten out. All right. Memorial Day Committee. Am I there?
No.
Council of the Aged.
Oh, Council of the Aged, I'm sorry. There we go. All right. For three-year term, Gene Callahan, 7 First Circle, Cinda Childs, 24 Lancaster Street, and John Rogers Senior, 27 Heritage Drive.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. Cultural Council, three-year term, John Chaney of 2 Sycamore Court, and Nancy Davis of 241 North Ave.
I'm... Oh, sorry. Make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. Director of Emergency Management, the Fire Chief, Scott Duffy, 86 Stanton Street.
Make a motion.
Second.
Oh, do we want to... No, I'm just kidding.
We got a motion and a second.
See, I wouldn't even do that.
That's pending on his box.
All in favor? All right. Fence Viewer. Annual Appointment is Thomas Rubel, the Building Inspector, 32 Nile Street in Abington.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor of the fence viewer, Tom Rubel? That's a vote. Alternate Fence Viewer, Vinnie Fontaine, 52 Pine Oak Drive, Situate.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. Forest Fire Warden. Annual Appointment is Scott F. Duffy, the Fire Chief, 86 Stanton Street.
I'll probably make this motion. Sorry.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. Master Plan Ad Hoc Committee, Donald Kahn, 64 Union Street, Open Space Committee, Patricia Foley, 23 Belmont Street, Reimagine Rockland, Jill Maroni, 384 Plain Street, School Committee, Jeff Phelps, 233 Grace Lane, Hanson, Chairman of Commerce, Rob Rosa, 474 Beet Street, Zoning Board of Appeals, Kristen Scholl of 89 Carey Street, Resident at Large, and Lauren White, 91 Beale Street, Capital Planning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I can make one suggestion, there's actually one other person who should be on here, who, frankly, I'm not sure, like, if this person, I submit their application on behalf of Reimagine Rockland, so if I can just make a motion at the table, just until we can clarify that, at the next meeting, that would be...
Well, I think we can appoint, we could probably appoint this committee and then add to it.
Oh, but can we just add her?
Yeah, we can add her. Well, find out if they did it.
Because the plan is, there's only going to be one member...
Yeah, so, as I understood, Christine Flaherty was going to be the Reimagine Rockland appointee, and then Ms. Foley was going to apply for like an at-large, our position, right? There wasn't...
There is a resident at large who's at library first.
So, Christine Flaherty was going to be a Reimagine Rockland appointee, so I just wanted to check with her as...
Okay. Because there is, so, we're looking for 15 members, and we have targeted department heads and key individuals, and unfortunately, at this point, we've only heard back from a little more than half of who we, you know, because the idea was, we wanted to get all of the stakeholders that could be impacted by a master plan to, you know, to step up. Unfortunately, at this point so far, we've been lagging a little bit, so...
Oh, but so, oh, to that end, would there be any harm in appointing, who has applied so far with the anticipation that we can add another person, because we still have them in the 15?
I'm all in favor of it.
So, it is, because I know that there were three, there were, I believe we were looking at three resident-at-large appointments out of it?
Yep.
Out of the 15? So, because we want to have residents, so we only have one resident-at-large, so we would have two additional resident-at-large.
Yeah. Oh, so we can appoint the people who've applied so far, and then if there is another application, oh, say in a week, at the next meeting, we can appoint another person?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's an open spot, we can appoint them.
So, let's do that, so we can get going on this.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry to make that into a...
All right. Got a motion and a second. You have a second?
Second.
To the Master Plan Ad Hoc Committee, as stated. All in favor?
I abstain.
My abstention.
So, my margin note says expect more appointments.
Right. Yes, yes.
All right. Memorial Committee, it's an annual appointment, and Anton Maturna of 416 Market Street, John Melvin, 21 Bradford Street, Jeff Nigerian, 22 Bradford Street, and John Rogers Senior at 27 Heritage Drive.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Reimagine Rockland Steering Committee, Pat Foley, 23 Belmont Street.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, on this one, there shouldn't be anything, because Reimagine Rockland is...
Oh, it's not, yeah.
Is outside of the town now.
That's right.
Sorry, Pat.
Yeah, it's actually a nonprofit, not even, that's true. Yep.
All right. Rent Control Board, three-year term. This is Casey Kidd, 31 Crestview Street, Hillcrest representative. Is he here? No?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. You've been a member for a while, right?
Of the rent control woman?
You're new?
I'm new.
She's new? All right. I have no idea. I don't pay attention to it, to be honest with you.
Casey is filling Chuck Squartrito's position, who was an incumbent in the rent control. She is a resident of Hillcrest, and there is a vacancy, and she is the only applicant.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion, ma'am? And a second. All in favor? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always glad to have new...
Thank you for stepping up.
Taylor of Ways and Measures, Inspector. Annual Appointment, and that's Thomas Rubel, 32 Nile Street, Abington, the Building Inspector.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? That's a vote. South Shore Regional District School Committee, three-year term, Bob Mahoney of 16 Maple Street.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. Tree Warden. Annual Appointment, Dave Taylor, 329 Summer Street.
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Youth Commission, three-year term, Jackie Gerges, Dubai?
Gervais.
Gervais, sorry, 27 Wall Street.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion in all second? All in favor? That's a vote. Zoning Board of Appeals, Bob Manzella. And for the record, I'm going to tell the board that I am asking the board not to reappoint Mr. Manzella, because we're getting a new administration, a new town government completely, and the board needs to change, and he's the only guy we can change this year. So what will be the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion to pass over the appointment of Bob Manzella.
Are we passing over or tableing?
No, we're going to not appoint him.
I'm asking what his, what that motion is.
I'm passing over. We're not, we will not, we will not appoint him.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
We got a motion in a second? Not to reappoint Bob Manzella? All in favor?
Oh, a passing, the motion was to pass over.
To pass over?
To pass over.
Well, that's the same thing, isn't it?
It's the same, yeah.
So all in favor? Is that unanimous?
Yes.
It is. Unanimous vote. Zoning Enforcement Officer, annual appointment, Tom Rubel, 32 Nile Street, Abington.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second? All in favor for Tom Rubel, the Zoning Enforcement Officer?
Sorry.
Is that a unanimous vote yet?
Oh, yes.
Sorry? All right, that's it on the appointments. Number eight. MAPC Presentation Proposed Rockland Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Ann Herbst, Board Chief. Oh, here she goes. Go to her.
Just wanted to take a quick second to introduce Ann. Ann has been working with the town on municipal vulnerabilities preparedness plan for the town. Part of that town, as part of getting this grant in order to move forward with the municipal vulnerabilities preparedness plan, is we had to have a hazard mitigation plan in place. The town has never had a HMP, Hazard Mitigation Plan, so the MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, was hired, contracted to do both plans at once. They go hand in hand. We had a group of department heads and commission members come and take a look at the hazards throughout town. And these are, you know, hazards due to earthquake, flooding, you know, forest fire, blizzards. Ann will be able to describe it much, much more in depth. But I would like to thank her for all the hard work in both plans that she's done, and we, she has a quick presentation for you tonight.
Thank you. Good night. I will be brief. I see you've had a long night already. Actually, I put on...
This is fun. Get to go with the way.
Okay, great. So anyway, I do want to thank you for the opportunity to give an update on the work of done by a team of town staff, and I want to credit Chief Duffy, who led the effort, with the assistance from staff from building sewer, water, and highway. So tonight, we're presenting the full draft of the plan. It will be available for public comment for two weeks, and then we'll submit it to MEMA and to FEMA for approval. As Chief Duffy said, MAPC is the regional planning agency for Rockland, and so we've been providing technical assistance to do the plan. And feel free to ask questions if you have them as I go along. So the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act was passed in the year 2000, and it basically set a goal for every municipality in the country to have a hazard mitigation plan. But it's a goal, it's not a requirement, so the carrot that FEMA puts out there is that if you do have a hazard mitigation grant, plan, you become eligible for grants from FEMA, and those grants can pay for fairly significant infrastructure projects, and they tend to pay on a 75%, with a town match of 25%. So having this plan done will, but will also, I think, you know, is good planning for the town, but it also makes resources available. So just a little bit about what hazard mitigation is. It focuses on natural weather-driven occurrences, so it's not about terrorism, it's not about chemical spills. Flooding in most towns in Rockland as well, I would say, is typically the most common, but we really have to look at every hazard, so we look at tornadoes, we look at earthquakes, even though some of those things are quite rare, but it's not like they never happen. And some things, we're seeing more of extreme temperatures and drought, for example. It's not an emergency response plan, so it's really, it's about preparation and planning to prevent issues in the future. And essentially, this is the impetus for FEMA to sort of start this whole program was to try and interrupt this cycle where you have a disaster, you rebuild in the same way, then you have a disaster again, and you find yourself rebuilding in the same way. So the idea is to, let's look at what these hazards are and do things differently to prevent damage. And this is basically describes the cycle of the plan adoption and doing the plan, so we use data from state and federal sources. But honestly, the most important information really comes from the local team, and so we integrate their knowledge and expertise into a FEMA-required format, and I'll show some examples of that in the next slides. And public input is sort of central there, because it is integral to the process. So this is actually the second of two required meetings. We met before the Planning Board in January, I believe, and so now we're here before you because we do have a full draft. And as I said, it's posted on the town website, it'll be there for two weeks, you'll see the information at the end, but anybody is welcome to provide comments during that comment period. After the comment period moves forward, we're basically finishing step five, we'll move into the approval and adoption process. So one of the tasks that we do is really identifying local hazards and mapping their locations, and so this, working with the town team, we identified areas that they know, separate from just looking at a FEMA floodplain, but they know to have flooded, so you can see that we focused on the roads basically there. So those are places that we know have flooded. The fireplaces aren't necessarily places where there have been fires, but there's places where you have heavy forest or brush, and where that's a real potential. And then the other one that the town identified was icing at the crest of Beach Street, that that's a common occurrence, sort of the first place to freeze, I think. So another process we went through was identifying all the critical facilities in town, and critical being having a fairly broad definition, so it includes disaster response sites, sites that we think where people might need assistance, like elderly housing, different kinds of critical infrastructure, dams and pump stations, all the municipal facilities. It doesn't show well on this map, but there are 68 of them, and they're all on there. And so the purpose of doing that is we're also identifying the flood areas and the fire areas, so you can look at those together. And I think that Chief is indicating, you'll find that useful for when you need to...
Extremely useful. Just when I responded up to Lawrence during the gas emergencies, we literally took this exact same map for the city of Lawrence, put it on a table, and began making our plans around this map. So I'm very excited that we have this mapped out for Rockland.
So one of the things we did was just to identify the mitigation measures that are already in place, because although this is Rockland's first hazard mitigation plan, it is not as if dealing with hazards or natural hazards is anything new to the town. So I didn't put these up here for us to try and read them all, I won't make you, I will not read them all to you, but really more to show that a lot is already happening in all the categories that we think about. And so it's, you know, some of these things are plans in place, some of these things are sort of daily maintenance, which is actually something really critical for hazard, for dealing with natural hazards. So it's quite a range, but just suffice to say, we weren't starting from zero with this. So the other thing I wanted to note was that the MVP program, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, is the state's program that focuses on preparing for impacts of future climate projections, and as the chief said, we were doing these in tandem. And so one of the things that I think made that very helpful for this plan is that we were able to integrate those climate issues into the plan, which is something the state just did on, they also do a plan, they just did that for their most recent plan. And so that will be, the information from the MVP will be in the hazard mitigation plan, and we thought about those issues as we talked about mitigation. So I sort of highlighted, I think, the main issues that we thought about relevant to Rockland are projections for more flooding, and unfortunately, also for a greater likelihood of drought, and for extreme heat days, which can be a big health hazard, and for extreme weather generally, for some of the bigger storms we've been seeing. So these are some of the measures that are in the new plan, or the first plan, and these, just to be clear, these plans have a five-year time horizon, and there's not, from FEMA, an expectation that every single, that at the end of five years, the town will be able to say, well, we did all of these things, but it was really town staff thinking about, well, what, where do we know we need and want to do some work? And as you look at this list, you'll see, sort of as we already referenced, flooding is kind of big on the schedule, but it's not the only thing. So there's a lot of sort of specific flood areas to address, and thinking about Studdly Dam, but there's also things you'll see, like clearing access lanes to forests to reduce brush fire risk, thinking about drinking water supply for the region, promoting drought-tolerant landscaping, and then I'll go on. And then most, I think, on this page tend to be items that are not for one specific hazard, but we call, sort of call them multi-hazards. So having a generator for town hall, communications around town, you know, addressing flooding, the leisure ones is, you know, could be for both flooding and for power outages. Public education is certainly one that can cover all hazards. And the last two are sort of specifically targeted to climate, but I would say, as I noted before, in many ways, we had climate in mind when we put together all of these. So in terms of process, the plan will go through a somewhat lengthy review process. First, it goes to MEMA, and then to FEMA, and then, assuming that it's approved, occasionally, they'll make a few notes, want a few, you know, small edits, but usually what happens is FEMA will issue a notice of approval pending adoption. That shouldn't say mayor, that should say selectmen adopts the plan. So we're not asking for action tonight, because that's not the way FEMA does it. So basically, tonight is for information, to make sure people know what's in the plan and that it's available for comment, but it will come back to you in some number of months, you know, probably three to six, to just say, you know, it's been approved by FEMA, please adopt it. And as I said, it's a five-year plan, and at that point, the town's eligible to apply for grants. And then, all to note that once the plan is approved, it's not meant to be that it's something that sits on the shelf, so it's meant to be something that will be regularly updated and thought about, and, you know, do sort of midterm checking on it. And in fact, as I think town staff now knows, it's a somewhat lengthy process to develop the plan, so it's, you know, starting again really already in year four to get ready to do it again. And then, the plan is on the town homepage, and that's my email address, so I just wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity to see that and to know that up till, we'll take comments up till June 4th, and then we'll incorporate any comments, and then it will go off to MEMA for review. And that's, I think, all there is.
Some questions for the board?
So is there a time period that we would have to have an approved plan before we would be eligible for grants?
As soon as it's approved, so in, you know, three-ish months, then you're...
As soon as it's approved by them...
Well, and adopted by you. So when we go through that process, then you're in your five years when it's in effect. Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Both of you. Thank you for the effort.
Thank you. Thank you. There was a lot of work by the chief and your town staff.
Thank you.
Number nine, Bulk Curbside Pickup, Board of Health Agent, Del Shawn Flipper's here to...
She's in the building.
Five, four. Come on up there, Del Shawn. I'm going to read the paper first, okay? It says, "Credit C curbside bulky pickup dated April 22nd. The Rockland Board of Health Office is working with Republic Services to offer residents a curbside bulky pickup. This service will be only available June 3rd, 2019, through June 7th, 2019." So that's four days in that week in June.
Five.
Five days. Residents that would like to take advantage of this opportunity should call the designated phone number that will be provided by the Board of Health Office and schedule a pickup with a Republic Call Center representative. Residents will provide their address, items to be picked up, and payment information. Please note that the Republic Services is $35 per item." Ms. Flipper.
I stressed myself out all day. Thank you, Larry. Have a good night.
No, I'm just telling a little bit of the people...
Yeah, so I am pleased to offer this program to residents in the town of Rockland. Like Larry said, the service will be available June 3rd through June 7th. Residents that would like to take advantage of this opportunity will call the designated 800 number that will be posted on WRPS, our website, and they can simply just call the Board of Health Office. They will schedule a pickup with Republic's Call Center, provide their address, items to be picked up, and payment information. This is not a free service, it is just a convenient. Republic's cost per item is $35. So if you have three mattresses, two couch, it's $35 a mattress, $35 a couch. This services for the communities of Rockland residents only. Items should be placed out by 7:00 a.m., day of pickup, and cannot be on curbside longer than 24 hours. Only scheduled and prepaid items will be picked up by Republic. The recycling vouchers will be available also starting June 3rd, however, you cannot use the vouchers for the curbside. Totally separate. Vouchers can only be used at the recycling center. And if this service proves to be very successful, I'd like to do it again in the fall.
How do you plan on communicating this to the residents? People don't really watch these meetings, so...
They do. WRPS, I'm going to put it on the town website, obviously our website.
Can we mail to residents? Or would that be too...
No, I could not. We don't even...
It's crossed, it's really crossed. It's a standard 4000. It does, so I want to commend you...
Unless you guys want to give me some more money.
So I want to commend you for doing this, because I think this has been a needed service within the town, so I think this is great. But I also see the potential of this biting us in the ass, in the event that if we can't... I'm sorry. One of the challenges always is getting the communication out, because I can see this going, and after the fact, people like, I had no idea about this.
This is why I'm here tonight. This is another one of my...
Because I love this idea, I just think we really want to think about how we try to communicate this to the residents, that a lot of them do know that it's available.
You see with a lot of programs that we run, where people come up here, they present to us, and the assumption is that people are seeing the presentation, and they know that it's coming, and then it comes, and it's, where's the communication? Who told us?
I know.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know. I was hoping Lenny Rowe would have stuck around, because he would have been a great resource. I mean, I'll try to reach out to many people as I can. I know social media, I'll have one of my board members would do it. Yeah, I could access...
I would love putting it on the...
On the sign.
I don't know if that sign is going to be able to put the 800 number and all that information, so I don't think, because I thought of the sign.
I don't know, maybe we can do something.
You can say inquire within, call Board of Health Office.
Is there...
But I just also have to reiterate that my office is not scheduling pickups.
Sure.
We're not taking payments, we're just providing a convenient service to people that don't have the means to get to the recycling center.
So is there, would there be an opportunity to use the services? I know the schools have one, and I know...
Like the reverse 911?
Yeah, and I don't know how that impacts, you know, is there a way that we could do that?
We have...
Not a reverse 911, but I know the school...
We have the ability to send a communication out to the town.
We do have the public system.
What's, I'm sorry?
They're on retainer, we're paying them anyway.
Chief, what?
We do have the ability, we do have a program to communicate with the town for any reasons that the board feels necessary.
Who wants it? Who does it?
I can do that for you. It's through the Emergency Management Department.
Yeah, and it's not a reverse 911 call, it's a community alert, yeah.
It's a community alert that can be used for any number, for any number of reasons.
So she could work with Del Shawn, could work with you, then could you, what she wants to put out, and then you could have it put out?
Yes.
I think that's just another way of trying to get, trying to get the information out.
You know, there shouldn't be any reason why you can't have a sign in the lobby of the town hall too, so that people coming up to town hall will see it all. Who wants it?
I can do that for you. It's through the emergency management department.
Yeah, and it's not a reverse 911 call, it's a community alert, yeah.
It's a community alert that can be used for any number, for any, for any number of reasons.
So she could work with Delshawn, could work with you, then give you what she wants to put out, and then you could have it put out?
Yes.
I think that's just another way of trying to get, trying to get the information out.
You know, there shouldn't be any reason why you can't have a sign in the lobby of the town hall too, so that people coming up to town hall will see it also.
And take a press release also, you know.
Oh my god, this is amazing.
So we have them on...
To simplify this project, I think Jen and Jim are pretty in tune to all, all the avenues we can blend together. Also, maybe after tonight, if you, all of us would just, so there's a coordinated approach to blend together with the chief mentioned, together with the press release, with the website, everything else, and then it'll be like a streamlined, uniform message that just goes out, and all really benefits all the residents, because I agree with Rich, this, I mean, I mean, I can't wait, I don't have anything to throw out now, but...
But if they have marks, we're gonna do it in the fall too.
Yeah, so do we have a, so there are, are there items that can't, so I'll give you a, you know, if they, if they have tires they want to get rid of...
$35 a tire.
It is, so even if they have a monitor...
Even if they have the smallest little, $35.
So there, any limits that, that will take hazardous...
No, they don't take hazardous waste.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody else?
How about TVs?
Yeah, $35.
Yeah, as we said, monitors, yeah.
Yeah. Larry, you're gonna be busy this weekend.
I can get rid of a bunch of them.
But again, like I said, so our prices at the recycling center are a lot lower, obviously, than this, so that is, you have to pay...
But this is the convenience of just transportation, sure.
It's the convenience of it, and I knew it was important to a lot of people, you know, we, I was just driving around Rockland, I see stuff on the side of the road all the time, and it's, and it's, I don't know, it's, I think it's needed, so that stuff like that doesn't sit there.
So since we don't get you up here too often, so, so, don't worry.
So I'm thirsty.
Don't worry, you're not in trouble. So with that being said, you and I had some discussion over the pink bags?
Yep. So that's gonna take place, I think, in the fall. The pink bags is another awesome program. It is taking textiles out of your regular trash, and what you do is everybody in the town of Rockland will get a pink bag. I don't have a prop, but then you put your, like, even if you have one bad sneaker and you can't find the other one, or you have sheets that are ripped, or any stain, or anything that's decent, put it inside this pink bag, they'll come up and pick it up on your recycling day. They take it, and they sort through it, if anything can be salvaged, they sell it in a little, like a, what's that, consignment shop. But other materials, they take them and send them across the country, and it gets broken down into like little fibers, and then they use that to stuff cushions, so everything's getting recycled, and all that stuff that people would normally throw in their trash totes, it doesn't, the tonnage isn't...
So what was the tonnage for us?
It lowers the tonnage, yeah.
And it, what's the cost to the residents?
Nothing, absolutely nothing. And once they pick up your pink bag, they drop off one.
Yep. Figured you're not up here often, give you the chance to talk about it.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions?
We'll have another chance Tuesday morning, between five and 10 minutes of this morning.
I'm putting my big girl pants on, this is, I'm shaking right now. I don't know if I can make it.
Oh my god, this is like the least intimidating group of people.
It's not that, it's the people that are watching.
And you don't, and you don't know which camera it is?
No, I have no clue.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah, thank you.
All right, town administrators report and correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jen and I will defy the honor tonight. The first item, Mr. Chairman, we have sent out to you, I think, two or three versions of an employment agreement report you would ask for a meeting or two ago. Stacy has been, has been working on that. Any comments, by all means, weigh in, it's in its third version now. I think it's pretty much there, maybe we'll add a calendar bar or something to the, to the bottom of it, but does it contain, so far as you've seen, does it contain the elements that you were looking for?
Yeah, I asked for a couple of positions put on, and I think you sent that version out today. So, yeah, everything, everything went pretty good.
Okay, so, so far, so good, is the...
Yeah, excellent.
You saw the, my email correspondence today with John O'Rourke about the energy aggregation program.
Yes.
He has committed to coming to your June 4 meeting, and Larry, I forgot, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I forgot the, the name of the housing association...
Leisure Woods.
Leisure Woods, okay.
Leisure Woods, it's on, it's May 29th, 7:30 p.m.
Okay.
By 7 o'clock, the meeting starts, but...
I'll make sure he knows that.
Great.
In a pathology report of sorts, it's due on Friday.
Yeah, Mr. Penny also said he would attend that meeting, I will attend.
Sure.
So that we'll have a selection there too.
The Leisure Woods one too?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Want to make sure that we're represented.
Larry volunteered me.
There you go.
Okay, good. I'm in the, as we approach the end of the fiscal year and in my service to the town, we're trying to make sure all our goods and services are being secured by June 30. To that end, I will say that the LED streetlight maintenance account actually doesn't come up until September. It's, it's not that time sensitive for June 30, but it looks simple enough. I may, I may just do that in the next few days. Same with town hall cleaning services, that contract expires, I think, September 25th. It self-renews, it's already renewed once, and we just might let that go unless, unless there have been some non-performance issues that have been identified. I haven't heard any yet. Same with elevator maintenance, that actually has to take place, you know, the cleaning and all, in the month of May or June, so I'll be doing that in the next couple of days, and as you've heard from the prior meetings, insurance applications, renewal applications for fiscal '20, actually, the, you know, the binder applications for coverage for the next year are, are being processed. It's funny, during the hazard mitigation process, Mr. Chairman, was that the dam, the very first picture we looked at, was that the Studley Pond Dam that I now understand is under state ownership?
Yes.
Okay, you may have been carrying it on the town's insurance policy, but we fleshed that out. The assessors, it's time for the triennial revaluation for fiscal '20 through fiscal '22, including, you know, interim year touch-ups as well. The menu of services that's being requested is six items, six items long. The invitations for proposals are, are gonna be recycled from the last two. The current one is, is with council, and all the advertising and outreaches are being performed now. Responses will be due July 1, so that'll be in, that'll be in place for them. On projects, we've had some, some interesting communiques of late, Mr. Chairman, the Park Street site, if any of you have, have seen some goings on up there. They're tightening up access, accessways and fences, and they're rearranging tarps and the like. One Tom had the polis of the Environmental Protection Agency, and his team have been in town. They expect to undertake the cleanup of that this season, early in this season, in fact, you know, perhaps, perhaps shortly. He and his, his assistant Sarah White are gonna be present at our department head meeting on, on Tuesday, they'll have a fact sheet. We learned our lesson from the aggregation rollout, let the staff know ahead of time about these things, and at the conclusion of the department head meeting, we're gonna have the two chiefs, Board of Health, Water Department, and other parties available to, to talk about the project logistics and, and the like. For instance, they're gonna need hydrant water, they may or may not need police details, they may or may not need, you know, a certain, a certain number of things, but we'll report, you know, the results and present the fact sheets to you at your June 4 meeting as well. So that's, you know, I think that's a pretty exciting thing to be, to be taking place. There are library building repairs, there have been some, there's been some damages that have taken place over there, some quotes have been, have been made to the library trustees. Frankly, it got queued up, you know, behind other things like the, like the McKinley Center, but we'll be getting those things out. The building department is gonna help us select among, you know, some of the proposals, repair proposals there. We didn't have, you know, the, the cost of these repairs really don't rise to the level of sealed bid and, and hard specs, and so in most cases, it's, you know, Mr. and Mrs. contractor, you know, can you come in and look at this and tell me what you're gonna do, and so the approaches vary, and that's the help that Tom and his people are gonna give, add to us, but we'll get that stuff done, we, at least under contract by, by the end of the fiscal year. At the special town meeting and at the annual town meeting, there were three articles approved for borrowing, $200,000 for, for the Water Department, $660 for, for Dave's Union Street sidewalk and intersection upgrade project, and Ian for the McKinley Building. And as of last Friday, I think you, Mr. Chairman, and you, Mr. Penny, were, were present when our, the leader of our finance team stuck his head in the door and said the financing will be in place for July. Dave Taylor is talking about undertaking that project in July, or sometime in the, in the summer. In McKinley, as you know, we've got, we've got a combination of borrowing and cash. Borrowed money cannot be spent or committed really until July 1. The cash portion will be, will be spent, you know, from mid-June to, to June 30. We haven't finished the procurement process on that yet, we are gonna do it on an emergency basis, but that thing is lining up pretty well right now, and we know the school department has put out a press release for their, you know, for public consumption, but most especially their daycare clientele on the, on the schedule. Jen has been coordinating relocation of town-sponsored services all this time, and she has a progress report on that, and I would, I would yield to Jen on that subject, Mr. Chairman, and Estes, and anything else that she may, she may wish to bring up with you.
Just two quick items. An update on McKinley, I'm happy to report that we have 100% relocation plan, if you will, for all entities currently in McKinley. So the Veterans Agent will be moving to the Senior Center. Historical Commission will be moving to Town Hall on as-needed basis. WIC has a mobile setup that they'll be utilizing out of Town Hall on their same schedule as at McKinley, which I believe is Wednesdays. The Youth Commission will be operating out of Town Hall also, and will be working with the custodial staff to find them new duty, well, not new duties, but believe they'll be working at Town Hall as well. And I would just want to note and thank, kind of, there's been great intra-departmental support, if you will. So at Town Hall, for example, staff has agreed to give up the summer use of the staff lounge so that the Youth Commission can use that space, so I want to thank them. And then just a quick update, or excuse me, one more item on McKinley. We'll be meeting again tomorrow with all of those groups to finalize actual move dates and any details for any needs they may have. And then on Estes, site prep work is underway pending their demolition permit, and the contractor has provided, been provided oil butter information, and will notice the butter is within 300 feet of the site within 10 days of expected demolition. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Penny, you're bringing up the Article 23. Then I'm done, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So thank you. So Article 23 of our, of the town warrant, that addresses the Article 97 land transfer. We've been working with local and, and state representatives to make sure that we do this process correctly, and one of the things that they recommended, they didn't, it was not necessary, but they recommended that both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen vote on it to move it, to advance it through the State House. So what I would ask is if we can make a motion to advance Article 23 of the town warrant, which is the Article 97 land transfer between the school and the park committee to the state legislature.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. Okay, this is one quick question. So this is an article right now, to get it into the form of a whole move petition, like, legislators on board...
All done, all done. So this is, this has already been, this has been reviewed by, so Senator Keening, Keenan, Rep. Coast, and their staff have been involved in this for about four months. It has already gone to state legal counsel, Legislative Legal Counsel, they looked at it. It's been to Bob O'Connor on the Mass Conservation Council, Arlene Council, Park Commission has already voted on it, school has already voted on it. We are literally crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, because we have, as a town, we have not done this correctly in, I think, five previous buildings in this, in this parcel, so. Sorry, I just, nope, that's okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
All right, comments and opinions expressed by individual members of the Board of Selectmen do not necessarily constitute opinions of the board, nor are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullin?
I really don't have anything tonight, other than just to highlight what Mr. Purcell said about our good energy. Their representative is coming here June 4th for our next meeting to give an overview to the board, I think, about what the process has been so far, but to really help, oh, better educate residents about what the community aggregation, like, energy plan is all about. I've been, oh, my emails, my texts, I'm sure like all of us and everyone here has been blowing up, so it'll be nice to, to have them here to provide some, like, information that, oh, really helps to, to dispel, like, in my opinion, the paranoia out there about this whole thing. But, so June 4th at this meeting, 7:00 p.m., tune in, please, please tune in, and that's all I got.
Mr. Newman?
I don't have anything, just hope everyone has a safe Memorial Day weekend.
Mr. Penny?
So I want to say thank you to the Rockland Police and all first responders. They continue, in my short timeline here, I don't know, it's been multiple times that I've, I've called out Rockland Police and Rockland Fire for the jobs that they continue to do on a daily basis. You know, we saw two instances today, how they handled unarmed suspects, how everyone worked together as a team to actually help someone's life, save someone's life. So Chief Duffy, Chief Lawell, and the entire Fire Department and police staff, thank you. Also want to wish all the high school graduates good luck. I believe tomorrow is their last day of school, so congratulations to, to all of them, and I wish them all the best going forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Just to reiterate what Rich said about our, our police and fire, we've had a lot of issues in this town over the last year, they've been very well documented, and it's very gratifying to me as, as a resident and a member of this board that, that we don't have those issues in those departments. They're departments that are run by true professionals, and it, you can see it in the professionalism of the men and women that serve for them, so I consider us very lucky to have the people we have in place in those departments, and very proud, actually. That's really...
That's really, really all I have.
I'd like to take a time to thank Jim and Jen for the work they've done on the McKinley School and helping us solve the issue of where to put everybody and when to get it cleaned, and the fire chief was immeasurable in his dedication to the job. He, you know, he's a guy who, I will say he brings a problem, but when there is a problem, he solves it, and that's a great thing. And I really want to thank him and all the people, the school department, too, the people that came over and spent their time and their concern to make sure that everything is gonna go well. And I want to, again, thank the people of the town of Rockland for supplying the needed financial impetus to get us over the hill on this and allow us to utilize that building for another while until we have to decide what we're gonna do with it. And there's so many people to thank, I could never thank them all, but thank you anyway to all you guys that were there at those meetings and spent the time and the effort to solve the issue. So thank you. I was the only guy not getting paid. It's just no big deal, you know? That's what we got here for, you know? Things are going well in town, and I think that everybody should be relatively happy with how things are working out and the work that everybody's doing, every single department, bar none. And again, we're making Rockland a great place to live and raise your family. Thank you, everybody, all entertainment. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. O'Loughlin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, also. Thank you and good night, everyone.